Ladies and gentlemen, could I have your attention? So, good evening, and thank you for joining us for the 2024 Primary Election Candidates Forum. My name is Chuck Rund, and I'm the interim CEO with the Grants Pass and Josephine County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm joined by Edith Decker from the Grants Pass Daily Courier. One of our most influential powers as citizens is exercising the right to vote. However, with this power comes a civic responsibility to consider our options and make informed decisions when electing representatives to office. That is what tonight is all about, to listen to the candidates and hear their positions on the issues. By the way, ballots will be mailed tomorrow, May 1st. Tonight's session is being recorded. You can view it live on RV TV, that's Rogue Valley Television, and see it tomorrow on the Grants Pass or this evening on Grants Pass and Josephine County Chambers YouTube and Facebook channels. Thank you for those who are watching from home. The rules for tonight are very straightforward. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction, 90 seconds to answer questions, and two minutes for closing comments. Julie Hall with the City of Grants Pass will be our timer. The yellow light, when it comes on on these two podiums, indicates that you have 30 seconds before you must conclude your remarks. The red light means time's up or zip it, in a fun way, of course. We will take questions from citizens in the audience, time permitting. I want to thank the Chamber ambassadors and Brittany Biller for assisting in collecting these questions. My last comment to you is, in the audience especially, me in particular, please turn your phones off so we don't have interruptions like that. And with that, Edith.
So, we are joined by the following candidates, first for position two. First, from left to right, first is Chris Barnett. He's a local radio broadcaster and multiple small business owner. Next, Mark Jones, retired firefighter. Next, Dan Mancuso, newspaper publisher from the Illinois Valley. Next, Colleen Martin. She's the former CEO of the Grants Pass Chamber and currently in real estate.
So, let's start with, so let's begin with you, Chris Barnett, for your two-minute
opening statement.
All right. Thank you very much, Grants Pass Daily Courier and Grants Pass Josephine County Chamber of Commerce, for having this forum tonight. My name is Chris Barnett. I'm a 43-year resident of Josephine County. I graduated from Hidden Valley High School, started working at 13 here, own property here, married Grants Pass native Stephanie Barnett out there, my wonderful wife. I have three wonderful daughters who are also active in the community. I have always been in business and serving in government for almost my whole entire life. I run and operate businesses, Realty Executives, a real estate franchise, Hamadi.com, Barnett Investment Properties. I've also been with Grants Pass Broadcasting for almost 30 years as a radio announcer for KLDR and KJO Radio. I've been in the Air Force for 33 years, serving on active duty, the Oregon Air National Guard, the Air Force Reserve, and now currently the Command Chief for the Air Force Auxiliary Civil Air Patrol, in which I'm on command staff and oversee six states with a budget of $76 million annually. The Air Force Corps values that are instilled in me are integrity, service before self, and excellence in all we do. In every job or position I have been in, I give back to others, and that fulfillment is why I'm positioned and well-rounded to run for Commissioner of the county I so much love. It's Fink County's motto, "Proud to be the best." Thank you.
Mark Jones.
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. It's good to see everybody coming out and getting involved. Quick bit about me, I grew up out in Murphy, graduated Hidden Valley High School. Shortly after high school, I got into the fire service. That took me to Phoenix, Arizona, where in 2018, I retired from the City of Scottsdale Fire Department. At that time, it was time to move home. Josephine County has always been that home to me. Since I've been back, I've gotten involved in many areas of the county. I'm currently the Vice Chair of the Rural Planning Commission, Vice Chair of the Josephine Housing and Community Development Council, and I'm the Foundation Director for Rotary Club of Grants Pass. I'm a board member on the Merlin Park District, a member of a citizen group for fire safety, and most recently, a member of Grants Pass and Josephine County Chamber of Commerce. I spent the past two and a half years learning this position. I go to the Tuesday meetings, the Wednesday meetings, and the Thursday meetings, special meetings, and even the Association of Oregon Counties meeting. I've spent many hours learning this position. By the show of hands, how many of you out there love Josephine County and want it to be safe, secure, and prosperous? For those of you who raised your hands, you're probably a lot like me. You also have a strong dislike for the individuals who pretend to care but actually prioritize their own interests. This is why I feel we need to stop electing individuals who promote lack of trust, partisanship, and lack of transparency. When politicians prioritize their own personal interests over the well-being of the county or community, it can result in ineffective governance and a lack of progress on important issues. This can further contribute to the frustration or dislike of politics. That is why you see the slogan on my business card, "I hate politics," because it's time to change the political atmosphere from "by the politician for the politician" back to "by the people for the people." So I implore you tonight to look for subsidence.
Thank you. Dan Mancuso.
Hello. I should know better than that. I am Dan Mancuso. I live in the Illinois Valley, where I have for 14 years, when I purchased the Illinois Valley News and then moved there. I've been very, I've been very involved in the Illinois Valley, not so much in Grants Pass. I have served, like I said, 14 years. I've covered the Josephine County Commissioners for that time, which gives me a rare institutional knowledge that most candidates don't have that are running for county commissioner. I'm on the Josephine County Budget Committee, which gives me a unique opportunity to thoroughly understand our budget. I'm on the Illinois Valley Airport Advisory Board, which gives me an understanding of what one of our largest economic drivers should be in Josephine County, which isn't. I also serve as Vice Chair on the Collaborative Economic Development Group, which is a joint effort between City of Grants Pass, Josephine County, and Cave Junction. If you want to hire somebody who's lived here their whole life, I'm not your guy. But I wouldn't hire a doctor based on how long they've lived here or when their family moved here. So, like I said, I've got 14 years' experience. I know all the department heads. I know what the departments do. I know how they work together. I have relationships at the state level, whether it be ODOT, OMP, OLLCC, ODF, ODA. So I know everybody. So I could actually start from day one and practically be relatively functional due to my last 14 years of covering Josephine County.
Colleen Martin.
Thank you. First, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you to the Chamber and the Daily Courier. I'm a native Oregonian, married to my husband Ron for 37 years. We have four children that are raising their families and involved in their own careers. My husband and I started a photo electronics business, the Photo Ten Vision and Sound here in Grants Pass. It was during that time that I got actively involved in local boards for the past 25 years and service organizations like Rotary. After 27 years, we sold our business. I've been involved in the Chamber and was encouraged to apply for the Grants Pass Chamber position. I went through a rigorous hiring process, which I know they're going through again right now, and I was given the position as CEO. It was a very fulfilling part of my life and career. I loved the work that we did at the Chamber, and we initiated some great programs and stopped a sales tax on businesses during my time there. Thinking I wanted more time with my family, I left the Chamber after six and a half years, and I got my real estate license. A year later, my husband got his license, so working as a team again, we were able to share both our strengths with our clients. Business is a high-energy job, and once you're in it, you don't want to leave it. So when I was invited to work for the Oregon State Chamber, I jumped on that opportunity. I worked there advocating for business through our lobbyist and working on professional development for all the chambers in the state for the last five years. I left there last December. I graduated from Rogue Community College in Business Technology and Business Management. In the Chamber world, there are multiple national tracks of education in government affairs, leadership, and economic development. I graduated from Western Association of Chambers Execs. They teach foundational knowledge for chambers to run efficiently and effectively. I graduated from the U.S. Chamber Institute for Organization Management, where they teach elements of individual performances and how to elevate professional standards. Protecting your hard-earned money and your retirement income is a concern we all share.
All right. Thank you. We'll begin now the questions, so we're going to make it so that everyone gets to be first and everyone won't get to be last. So we'll begin our questions, which are for all of you, and we'll begin them with Mr. Jones. You'll be first to answer this first one. It is, "As a member of the Josephine County Commission, what would be your highest three priorities?"
So my highest three priorities would be housing, public safety, and the economy. So you might elaborate on those, I'm assuming. So housing, obviously, we have a major shortage. Something I've always talked about with people is we need the stepping stones that we're missing here. We need the small home communities and the workforce housing. We don't have those in place right now, and it makes it a struggle for a lot of families to even get started. They can't afford the high rents, and they can't afford a $300,000 to $400,000 home. So we need those homes in that price range from $150,000 to $250,000. That's how we handle our housing situation. As far as the economy, we need to start investing a little bit into our airports and into CJ. I believe the whole Illinois Valley is probably going to be the best option of creating an economy for light industrial. They have a lot of flat usable land out there that we just don't have in and around Grants Pass. And as far as safety, we need to make sure that the law enforcement is fully funded and protecting our communities, because if it's not safe and secure, we're not going to get the families and the businesses to want to invest here.
All right. Mr. Mancuso.
The top three issues, I think, that's on everyone's mind is always public safety, which we've just made a big step towards by creating the law enforcement district outside of the city of Cave Junction. Now we need to make sure that the county continues to fund the sheriff at the certain percentage of general fund dollars that they get current. The second thing, obviously, is the impact of homelessness or the unhoused on the citizens of Josephine County. It's a problem whether you're in the county, where it's created a huge solid waste issue that nobody really seems to think about, because you only see the people on the street. The majority of the unhoused people in Josephine County you don't even see unless you're out outside of Main Street, whether it be here or Cave Junction. And then, like I said, Mark said workforce development, housing. Something like 58% of the people in Oregon that actually rent, their rent costs more than 50% of their wages. And there's only two counties in Oregon that actually, where people can live on a minimum wage job. So somehow, coming up with a way to increase the housing inventory in Josephine County would be my third.
All right. Ms. Martin.
So, the county has a very complex budget, and that is one of the most important things to me, to get to understand and understand that completely, because as I mentioned, that protecting your budget is important to me, so we have to be able to protect the county's budget. And I want to see what kind of inefficiencies that we might have and seek to make those as efficient as possible. That would be the number-one thing that I'd do first, and actually, I've already started working on some of those pieces. Law enforcement is number one. I've worked on three of the five levies from 2012 to 2017, and it was hard to get those to pass. And then, most recently, I worked on the district last fall for the sheriff's district. So law enforcement is a priority, protecting you and protecting my family, protecting my parents, my mother, my grandchildren, and the vulnerable populations that we have in our county. Lastly, it's working within the county just to understand the departments. I think that we have an amazing staff out there in our county departments, and giving them the ability to be their best and to do their best jobs is incredibly important. And listening, and listening to what the citizens want within the county. We can't do our jobs without knowing what you want from us.
All right. Mr. Barnett.
Yes. Important topics, priorities for me, and I've been out talking to citizens about this, homelessness and the drug problem that we have in Josephine County. The homeless situation is a big top priority. I've been out talking to the homeless, finding out what the number-one thing is out there, substance abuse. As a former law enforcement officer, I'm being a brother out to these brothers and sisters and talking to them and trying to get them to get some type of rehabilitation. They want it. The system is very soft out there right now of letting them go too easy, and the penalties aren't harsh enough. But I do want to work with, you know, Grants Pass and Cave Junction are incorporated cities. They're responsible for their own government. As a county commissioner, I want to share my resources and help those cities. It's really a city issue, but out in the counties, we have pay-for-pay use parks, so we don't have a lot of the homeless issue in the county parks. Public safety is another top priority for me as a former law enforcement officer. Public safety for all. I want to spark interest back in the sheriff's reserve program to help augment our sheriff deputies right now. I go on ride-alongs. I've been with them, and the sheriff's reserve program works. It's another no-cost way to try to help law enforcement. Also, lastly, unity in the community. I want good people in government again. That's why I'm running. I want to be a good representative of we, the people, out there, and that's why I'm running for county commissioner. Thank you.
The second question, and before I ask the question, with the participants, please speak a little closer to the mic for those in the back of the room. The second question goes to Mr. Mancuso to begin with, and it's this question. There is a county charter initiative on the ballot, 17-116. Do you favor or oppose this ballot measure, and why?
Initially, when it came out, I didn't like it at all. I didn't like a lot of, in particular, issues with it, but over the amount of time and talking to people and really kind of coming to understand it a little bit more and not eating the fear that's being fed to people out there, I've come around to the fact that I still think there is issues with it that could be better. But overall, I'm for it, and if it passes on May 21st, I would certainly run for District 1, which would be the one that I live in. So yes, I am in favor of it.
Ms. Martin.
I completely understand why the public wants the charter. I understand and I sympathize for that. Fundamentally, I just don't think we can, we can't afford it as a county. I have been an employer. I understand payroll. I understand the rising cost of that annually, and if we think this is going to stay within a small budget within this year, that's not going to happen within the years to come. This county does not like to, we already have a very small tax base, and this county doesn't want to pay any more taxes, and so we simply can't do it. I believe that we, I would much rather have more deputies, more police force, than politicians within our county. So I don't support it.
Great. Mr. Barnett.
Yes, I do welcome new ideas. I welcome those. The 17-116 issue, I understand why it was brought up. I'm a firm no on this at this time, because it creates bigger government. And I've worked in bigger government in the Department of Defense. So let me tell you what, trying to get things done with more people to try to make a decision, it gets delayed, 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 and we don't get things done efficiently. The more people we have on staff, the more they got to get approval, the more they get a check. So I don't like the big government, and I ask people, "Do you like big government?" And it's a resounding no. And I said, "Well, this creates more county commissioners and a county manager that you don't get to vote for." I kind of don't agree with that take. It takes away your right to vote. It will cost double than the amount of the commissioners now. We need more, we need better government, not more of it. I do believe in fine-tuning the current charter, though. I do believe in that. So as we adjust to the times out there, I firmly believe that we can incorporate things to make our charter better. At this time, though, I think it's going to cause a lot of confusion. It's going to cause a big disaster for Josephine County. I just don't think it's right at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
So I sat in with the charter review committee on their meetings. I wasn't part of the committee, but I sat in as an observer. For two years, they went through the current charter line by line, and a lot of those, a lot of the language that was in there, they found was obsolete language. They found that the state preempted a lot of the line items that were in there, and they removed quite a few parts of it. So our current charter has a lot of outdated sections and needs to be replaced. The new charter that was proposed took out a lot of those things that the Charter Review Committee said should be removed. The five commissioners and a county manager, if you're looking at running the county like a corporation, a corporation has a CEO and a board of directors. So if that's something that you believe the county should be ran, then that's the way you should vote. I suggest that each and everybody puts the two charters side by side, and I really wish the revision was more available of what they suggested the new one should be, because it'd be a much better comparison of the two. So look them over carefully and make your decision for yourself. I don't believe it's up for me to tell you which way to vote. I, damn it, out of time.
Next question. We'll begin with Ms. Martin. The question for all of you is, "Josephine County includes some of the poorest ZIP codes in Oregon. What can you do to address poverty and homelessness in Josephine County?"
That's a great question. We do have the poorest, and I actually was grown up, I grew up as one of those, so I can relate to that, I think. We just have to really encourage our students. We have to encourage our families. The homeless situation, I have been on the board for Mid Rogue Foundation. We just recently started plans for a veterans' village on five acres that we own. We built Foundry Village for transitional housing. We bought a group housing, a house for seniors that we house. So I'm familiar with the housing situation. I'm familiar with transitional housing. I'm familiar with the homeless, the Mint Program, everything that's going on in the park. We have to wait, unfortunately. I do believe that this is a city, a county, it's a community problem. It's not just one government entity's problem. It's all of our problem, and we all have to deal with it, and we all have to look at answers for it. What I'm most worried about is what's going to happen if we do get approved, if this does, the city gets the Supreme Court decision. What is going to happen to our law enforcement then? Because we are going to have a huge burden put on them, along with where are we going to put these homeless people? So we need to be thinking to the future.
All right. Mr. Barnett.
Could you repeat the question?
Certainly. "Josephine County includes some of the poorest ZIP codes in Oregon. What can you do to address poverty and homelessness in Josephine County?"
Wow. I started my first career here as a box boy at a grocery store. I met the requirement and worked my way up to management. I mean, Josephine County has made me where I am today and given me so many opportunities. Yeah, we're a poor. I grew up in a logger family, one-income family, got laid off because of Spotted Al. I grew up in a poor household. My dad said, "Get out there. If you want to earn your way in this life, you got to get out there and earn it." So I believe in a hand up, but not a hand out. And the homeless situation, I care for people. I've been serving people my whole life in law enforcement and in the military. It's called sacrifice. I want to see people get back on their feet. So the homeless situation is a joint effort by all of us, all of us citizens as well. What do we want? Substance abuse is pretty bad here, and I know a regular homeless person takes the meal I give him, takes the coffee I give him. Our kids used to do it. My wife and I used to go do that all the time, and then they didn't want that anymore. They wanted money. And I'm like, "Why do they want money?" "Oh, they bought some alcohol and some drugs over there." So being a law enforcement officer, I can read this stuff. It's truly not a homeless problem. It's a substance abuse problem. And everybody wants to ignore that, and I'm like, "Look, I've been out in the field, and I have seen this firsthand." So I firmly believe we got to get the law enforcement's priority and get these people in rehabilitation.
Mr. Jones.
So to solve the poorest ZIP codes, we need a better economy. We sit in a trifecta of transportation. We have the 199, the I-5, and the railroad. If we were to invest a little bit into some infrastructure and create an area in Josephine County where we could have a transportation hub, say a warehouse, cold storage facility, maybe even an Amazon plant, who knows if we want them here or not, but point is, we need to invest a little bit into our community to provide that infrastructure so that we can attract those businesses to bring those jobs here to Josephine County so that we won't be the poorest ZIP codes anymore. We need those high-paying jobs, and along with the homelessness issue, we need those small homes and those workforce. If we can have the workforce housing, the tiny homes, to help with those people who are living in their cars, or living on a friend's couch, or living with a family member that they can't afford to go get a place of their own, we need to make those small home communities, and building ADUs would help that as well, because those family members that are stuck on a couch can now have a home of their own. So we need to work on our economy and build some homes.
Mr. Mancuso.
I would argue that Josephine County has the lowest ZIP codes in all of Oregon. You have to look at, those numbers came from the IRS. They came from tax numbers. They came from income. A lot of people don't have income, taxable income. If you have other investments, that's dividends. If you're growing marijuana on the black market, that's not taxable. And I would also say, and I don't know where we stand today, but it wasn't that long ago when Josephine County was actually ranked seventh in the state of Oregon of deposits per capita. So you could say that few of the people have all the money and most don't, but I completely disagree with the idea that we're the poorest. The other thing, I'm going to just grant a lot of things right here. Drug and alcohol addiction is not the number-one cause of the unhoused in Josephine County. It's not. The number-one cause is elderly people who are trying to live on $1,000 a month in Social Security, and they can't find housing. 55%, no, this is true, because I do the point-in-time count for the last two years, and I meet the people in the woods. They don't have any, it's 55 years and older are the number-one generation or age bracket for homeless people in Josephine County. And you guys want to focus on drugs and alcohol, and that's great. It's a small portion of it, because they're the ones you see downtown. But the truly homeless people that are living in my pump house or in your pump house?
Next question. This one goes to you, Mr. Barnett. How do you plan on keeping businesses thriving while we continue to deal with the challenges such as increased costs and increased taxes?
Well, we got to stop increasing taxes. That's number one. So how are we going to do that? Yo, I'm an entrepreneur. I'm self-made. Nobody gave me a dime in this county. I had to work for it. And I believe in programs. We have programs all the time to get you out there to work. I had to join the military to get on my feet, and it taught me everything I am today. 33 years and still doing it. Why? Because it taught me something. I want our cities and our counties to prosper. We have to have some great ideas to bring to the table, which I have, and I think that we have a lot of tourism here, that people come here and enjoy. But you know what? If we don't have a strong law enforcement presence and we don't get a handle on the homeless situation, the appearance deters a lot of people from coming here, especially right now when Grants Pass made the whole entire news across the United States. I'm disappointed, because I've been here 43 years, and it never was like this, never. So I want to make sure that we have been growing, Grants Pass and the counties have been growing quite at a good pace. We just need to adapt, and we got to make sure that we keep our tax low, and that we make sure that we welcome businesses to expand here in Josephine County and our cities, or you're going to turn them away. So I'm all for welcoming businesses to create jobs here in Josephine County. Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Could you repeat the question, please?
I will repeat the question. "How do you plan on helping keep businesses thriving while we continue to deal with the challenges such as increased costs and increased taxes?"
Well, for businesses to thrive, they need more sales or more service provided, or be able to provide more service. So we need more people. So to attract more people, we need to make this a safe, secure environment. We need to make this area more attractive to not only individuals and families We need to make this area more attractive to not only individuals and families, but to other businesses as well. If we're able to have business-to-business transactions, that helps lower the cost, 'cause they're not having to pay to transport these items farther. Cost of fuel, obviously, is an issue for that. Taxes and regulations for businesses to get started here, a lot of them end up backing out because it costs too much for them to get started here. We've made it so hard and so difficult for somebody who creates a new product at home and they wanna get it into a, make it a business or a service here in the county, it's too difficult for them to get started. So, reducing regulations and finding assistant programs, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the SBDC out there, RCC, but they help with a lot of small businesses. So programs like that, and helping those people get those businesses started. But most of all, we need the people here buying the products and paying for the services they provide. So creating an environment that attracts more people is how we make these businesses thrive.
Mr. Mancuso?
Well, for starters, Oregon is a horrible place to do business in if you're a business owner. It's, I mean, I've done business in many states, and I'm telling you, this is, when I was buying this paper, my friends says, "Don't go to Oregon." Well, I don't listen. So I don't really know what a county commissioner actually could do to make things better for local businesses. I can tell you what they could have done, and I can tell you what we should start doing next year. We need to start investing in the infrastructure in Josephine County. We need to get, if you wanna look at our economic, the airports, neither of them have sewer or water. We need to start doing that. Where's the money gonna come from? We need to start figuring that out. Back in the sixties and seventies, Josephine County, you didn't pay any property tax, zero. I don't believe you started paying taxes until late eighties, early nineties, and then I think it was, it was like thirty cents per thousand. They should have been taxing that money all along, and they should have been investing in the future. And until we start looking forward, instead of going back to the fifties, I wanna go back to the future. We've got to start investing in our future through infrastructure if we ever wanna see ourselves get anywhere other than where we are right now.
Ms. Martin?
So along with Dan, I'm on the Collaborative Economic Development Committee, and there's so many factors to consider in economic development and keeping our businesses thriving. Bringing in new businesses is definitely something that we wanna look at. Work skills go along with bringing in new business, and do we have those? Can we support them? Can we support the manufacturers? I doubt that we could actually support an Amazon if we brought an Amazon here with the work skills that we have. We need to train, train people up. Housing, transportation, there's just so many factors that go along with it. But the good news is, we have some industrial lands. In the Collaborative Economic Development Committee, we're working on targeting all those lands that are within the city and the county, and creating a map so that we can market that. So there's lots of opportunities in that. The airports, they are getting water out to the Grants Pass Airport, but Illinois Valley still needs some, and Illinois Valley has so much potential out there for expanding in their airport area. They've got great land, flat land, beautiful land, that people could, we could prop up some hangars and put some businesses in there, and that would be an amazing project for our county. And then, once we start bringing in these businesses, adding, those are gonna add to our tax bases, they're gonna buy homes, they're gonna pay property taxes, and those are the things that are gonna help our county thrive. We need to be on the lookout for every opportunity that we can. We need to work along with SO Ready.
Our fifth question for all of you, we'll begin with Mr. Jones on this one. What is your assessment of the level of trust citizens have with county government now? What would you want to do to either maintain or improve that level of trust?
So I believe there was a study done, I don't know if it had to do with trust or not, but in talking to a lot of citizens out there, the trust in our government is pretty poor. They don't trust that they're making the right decisions for the people. They don't trust that they're being listened to and being heard. A lot of times what I see is the partisanship and the division. You know, we're, we're so divided in so many ways that it's hard to make progress. We don't move forward and work on projects together because we're too busy worrying about what political party we belong to. We are one nation, we should start acting like one nation, and start working together and bring ourselves in a more positive, productive manner. That would restore trust to our government, to have a government that actually brings the people together instead of dividing them. And I'll end it with that.
Okay, Mr. Mancuso?
There is a perception in America today that you can't trust your government, and I think it depends on which government's in power, of who believes that you can trust them and who can't. Like Marx says, that has to end. If you want transparency, I was just gonna talk about Josephine County, 'cause that's, I think we're running for Josephine County Commissioners. Read a newspaper, read all three of them, read all four of them, I don't know how many we have in here now, I know it's a bunch of new ones have popped up recently, but read a newspaper. What we do is, we go and we listen to these meetings, and we report back to you what they said. At least that's what my newspaper does. So if you want transparency and you wanna know what's going on, it's there. But I will say this, I firmly believe that a lot of the actions that have been taken of late in Josephine County by our county commissioners have not been what's best for us. I have seen the most insane, crazy things go down the last few years that blow my mind. We just sold a twenty-four million dollar property for nine million dollars, and we're not gonna get a dime of tax dollars out of it. Blows me away, we would've been better off sitting on it. We have to start thinking, but I don't believe that right now, our current board of commissioners, in any form or any, you know, pick whatever combination you want, I'm confident that they are not being as transparent with us as possible. And how better to be transparent than put a Fox, a journalist, in the henhouse?
Okay, Ms. Martin?
All right, so assessment of trust, I think that's why we have the charter, has gotten legs, honestly. And I think it's, that's the reason that you see that. No, we don't have a sense of trust within our government. I don't believe we do that, definitely within the county, and especially not in the city. We are too divided, our community's too divided in our politics, and it's, we've got to change the culture. There's the only thing that we can do is change the culture within our county, change the culture within our citizens. And the first place that we have to do it is, you always start at the top. I mean, in any government or any business, you're gonna start at the top and you're gonna work down. So starting at the county, we've got to work, earn your trust. Our commissioners are divided in their priorities, so we watch that on television, and that makes it even harder for us to trust them. We have to be united, we have to be united, working together. And I have a great track work, track, I forgot the word I'm looking for, but, to work with other people. I work well with others, I communicate well, I, except the point I forget words. But I think that I can work with anybody in this room, and we can accomplish some, get some things done.
Okay, Mr. Barnett?
Unity in the community. I want that to be one of my priorities, is getting out there to meet you, the people. We, the people, we are the government, right? We are the government. I raised my hand for the Constitution, and I have values, integrity, service before self, excellence in all we do. I hold those values today. Why some people don't have those core values, I don't know, but those are with me. So when I put on the uniform, whether it be military, law enforcement, or county commissioner, when I walk outside to the public, I represent you, the people. You're the taxpayers. I've worked for the taxpayers my whole life. And when I get to meet you, and listen to you, and show that we do good things in the community, it's gonna earn your trust back in government. Hey, that person's not so bad. That officer's not really as bad as I saw on TV. Community policing. We can do community unity just by being government officials and being out in the community, meeting you, talking to you, build bridges. You may have different views, we can, we can agree to disagree, right? But the bottom line is, I wanna build that rapport like I have been in all my community service and events that I've done. I talk to anybody at any time. So those are just core values that I have, and you have a chance to vote, two brand-new commissioners coming up next month. Thank you.
Next question to Mr. Mancuso. Where do you see the county in five years? What would be the biggest improvement you think could happen in the next five years?
That's a loaded question. You know, government moves slow, and it takes a lot of time to get anything accomplished, to get it from conception to actually implementation and completion. But what I would like to see in five years' time is for us to figure out a way to create a permanent mineral and timber trust that locks up money that we get from the ground and from the forest, that cannot be spent, that stays there and grows, and you can use your interest. That is something that I really would like to see, and I know that there might be a couple things here and there from the state that we might have to work around to where the legality of that. But I'll tell you this, Wyoming knows that their coal is ending in forty years, and they've already started a mineral trust. Their goal is to have a hundred billion dollars in it. My daughter graduated from University of Wyoming for free, because Stan Hathaway in nineteen seventy-two had the foresight to create a mineral trust then, and there's so much money in it. But they know coal's going away. So I'd like for us to start looking forward and figure out a way so we're not having this conversation. You guys don't wanna pay taxes, that's fine. But you know what? Let's start investing our money in ways that actually are going to help, it's not gonna help me, it's not gonna help my kids, it might help your grandkids or your great-grandkids. You wanna look out for the future, let's start today.
Ms. Martin?
So, I would like to see three great commissioners, not five, three. I don't believe that, again, going back to hiring a person with a degree is not gonna give you the results that you want. So if you get three people that can work together, and that's crucial, they have to work together, we cannot have a divided commissioners, first and foremost. Retention of our current businesses, we need to be looking in our own chicken house, so to speak, to make sure that we're retaining the businesses that we have. We're losing Dutch Brothers, we'll probably lose their, we're losing their headquarters, number one. And that's one of our home-sourced businesses, and to me, that's incredibly sad. So retention and retaining the businesses that we currently have is really, really important. Bringing in new business, yes, we wanna, we wanna attract it, but we've gotta retain the jobs that we have. We've got some amazing manufacturing companies out there, we need to assist them, we need to meet the needs that they have. And finally, housing, how, in five, we're talking five years from now, housing's moving. They're building, it's slow, it's not moving as quickly as we want, the real estate market is slow, interest rates are high, but I think we're gonna see changes in that. And so I think you're gonna see better business, better housing, and three great commissioners.
Mr. Barnett?
Could you repeat the question? Did you repeat the question again?
The question is, where do you see the county in five years? What would be the biggest improvement you think will happen in five years?
Well, I'd like to see us be a cleaner city again, I'd like to see us be a cleaner county. I'd like to welcome more tourism here. I'm proud to live here, just like you guys. But I would've seen in five years that we're in a better place, creating more jobs. Businesses are moving out of here. I'm in the real estate business. You know how many people are moving out? A lot. And how many people are moving in? Not as many as, that are moving out right now. Sell my home, get me out of here. Why? I don't like the way things are going. Gotta clean up what we're seeing out there. The homeless, homeless issue, I'd like to get those people in rehab, I really would like to see that cleaned up. I think we have a lot of natural resources in Josephine County, my dad was a logger, okay? Selective logging, I mean, it's on the patches of the Josephine County Sheriff's Office. You have the log truck on there, right? With the wood. We're an abundance full of natural resources, and some of those things, I wanna, we gotta talk to our state about loosening up some of those restrictions. I like selective logging, I like our natural resources and see if we can benefit from that as a county. Tourism, our parks, our airports, our fairgrounds. Two of our biggest profit centers that we have right now in Josephine County that are working, Josephine County Fairgrounds, go out there, support them, they're expanding, they're bringing new things. And our Josephine County Airport and the Illinois Valley Airport, they bring good things. Those are two profit centers we really need to look at to expand and use more. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Well, in five years, I would hope that we're all working together and coming to positive solutions on our homeless issue, on our housing issue, on our economy. You know, we have a lot of, sorry, like they said here, we have a lot of great resources. We have a lot of minerals in the ground that mining could help produce some income for our county. The timber industry, you know, with ONC funds and SRS funds, you know, it's been dwindling away for years. There is actually a principle in tort law that indicates if a person's use of their property causes an inconvenience, harm, or annoyance to others, such as neighbors, they may be held liable for resulting damages. And I think about that as a public nuisance in the way that BLM, ONC lands, and BL, or Escumene Forest Service, they don't properly maintain their lands. They don't clear them, they don't log them anymore, so the logging roads are no longer in use, so fire apparatus can't get through there. When those fires come through, what does it do? It creates a public nuisance for Josephine County. So maybe that's something in five years from now, we'll have had a lawsuit go through and actually make them either log or pay us for the inconvenience that their misuse of their lands has been causing to Josephine County citizens.
All right, that concludes our time for questions. This leaves a chance for each candidate to have two minutes to kind of round up what they'd like to say. And continuing with our system, we'll begin with Ms. Martin.
Well, first of all, thank you to the Courier and to the Chamber again for hosting us, and the City of Grants Pass for allowing to us to use the chambers, 'cause I really like their systems of buttons and red and yellow, that's the best one we've done yet, thank you. And special thanks to you, the audience, you are the concerned citizens for coming tonight, giving up your evening. I know it's probably the last thing some of us wanna do, is go out and listen to more people talk, and, but you're concerned, and that is a great respect and admiration for you. We're at the crossroads of making some very big changes for our county's future with two commissioners coming in. A commissioner's job is to listen to the needs of the people. They have a critical role in driving initiatives, policies, and good solutions to address the issues of our community. My goal is to make the best decisions that are supportive of the voice of you, the people in this county. I have over a decade of experience serving the county's business owners. I come with a clear vision on how to support a thriving economy. I am the most experienced candidate to work with budgets, staff, and most importantly, policymaking. We've got to stop the division that has been a trend in the commissioner's office for way too long. We have to work as a team for the betterment of our county staff and the citizens. As a mom, a wife, and a grandmother, I promise to bring my heart and experience to serve you and our beautiful county. I have the skills, I have the ability, and I am ready to do the job. Your job is to check the correct box. Thanks.
Mr. Barnett?
Thank you, everybody, for showing up here. This is the best-attended forum that we have all had as candidates, so thank you so much for getting involved. It's a problem, people don't get involved in their government anymore. They don't care. I care, and that's why I'm running. I finally said, you know what? And they said, "If not you, who?" And I said, "I wanna represent the people, I've been serving people my whole life." And it's, it's time that we get more involved in our government. So I wanna thank you for being here, for one. I'm for God, and for family, and for country, and freedom. I'm all about you, the people, and I wanna be your voice for all. I wanna thank you for having me today and getting to know us as our candidates for county commissioner, and I hope you really choose wisely. With my vast, diverse background and experience in leadership, government, business, community service, I'm very well-rounded to take on this role on day one. I've been out in the field already doing apprenticeship, been meeting with our county departments already, trying to be there so on day one, I know who to go to and how to get answers for you. That's what you want. Somebody is actually getting the job done and going to show that you can do the job. It's the CEO of the county, you got three of them. Please choose wisely. Please choose wisely. I really feel that I'm ready for this next chapter in my life and serve the citizens of Josephine County. I want to put my experiences to work and help Josephine County, which needs more help than ever, to provide services to you in the future. I want to build bridges and put you, the citizens, first. I want to be your voice as I will go into territory that others will steer away from, like the homeless. I've been out in the field, I'll go talk to them, I'll find a solution. I want to be a representative for all and serve you as I have been at all my various jobs and positions for over 43 years, living in Josephine County. I encourage you to read up more about me, go to visit chrisbarnett.com. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Well, I thank you all for coming out again tonight and learning about the candidates. As you ponder who you'll vote for, please think about what you've heard here tonight, who displayed the knowledge and who has the values you desire. I honestly never saw one of these candidates in the commissioner meetings prior to three months ago. It's not a job you can learn in three months. In fact, most elected commissioners can't even learn it in a year and a half. I have spent countless hours learning this job and know the inner workings of the county. I can step into the position tomorrow and not miss a beat. This is a nonpartisan position, and I am a non-affiliated voter. I was a registered Republican for more than half my adult life. When the far-right and the far-left made it, excuse me, when the far-right and the far-left made being friends with non-party members punishable offense, I became an independent, and then they started acting the same way. I'm a critical thinker, and I do not need a party to divide me any further than my government already has. We are divided in so many ways that progress is a thing of the past. The powers-to-be know that divided we will fall. They saw what One Nation Under God, Indivisible, did to them in 1776. They have spent the last 248 years dividing us so that it won't happen again. I believe that Josephine County to flourish, we need to come together and focus on the important issues. I realize that I may not have the name recognition, but it's not a popularity contest. It's a job interview, and you should pick the one who will listen to you regardless of your party affiliation. Who knows the job, will perform the best, and provide you with a safe, secure, and prosperous county. We need a commissioner who will prioritize housing, our economy, and public safety. I will be that commissioner, as you.
Thank you. Mr. Mancuso.
As I've mentioned, I have covered the Josephine County Commissioners for 14 years. During those 14 years, I have watched, listened, or attended in person to nearly 3,000 meetings. That means I have 14 years of institutional knowledge of what's going on here. I know how we got here, I know the decisions that were made, and I know what to do right, and I know what to do, what not to do, because I don't agree with it. As far as being a county commissioner, there's three, maybe five, but there's three county commissioners, and you have to come up with a consensus. I just can't waltz in there and say, we're doing this, and John's going to go, kif she fine. We have to agree, a lot of the issues that Josephine County holds today, we can't solve them until we come to a consensus of what those problems are. And if anyone thinks they're going to solve homeless, that's been around since, I don't know, I mean, technically, Jesus was homeless, I mean, homelessness has been around, as a kid, we had the hobo jungle off the railroad tracks where the guys would ride the rails and they'd camp out for a few days. We're not going to solve it, but what we can do is mitigate the impact it has on you, our citizens. As county commissioner, I don't have to like your project, I don't have to like your political ideology, but I do have to like the fact that it's my job to help you solve the problem or help you out. They have said a number of times, and I agree with them, choose wisely. And if you want to choose somebody that has the knowledge, the experience, the desire, and the thoughtfulness, the right choice is easy. It starts with an M, M-A-N-C-U-S-O. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a great hand.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the 2024 Primary Election Candidate Forum. My name is Chuck Rundt, interim CEO with the Grants Pass and Josephine County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm joined by Edith Decker from the Grants Pass Daily Courier. One of our most influential powers as citizens is exercising our right to vote. However, with this power comes a civic responsibility to consider our options and make informed decisions when electing representatives to office. This, to office, this is what tonight's all about, to listen to the candidates and hear their positions on the issues. Ballots are mailed tomorrow, May 1st, get ready. Tonight's session is being recorded, you can view it live on RV TV, Rogue Valley Television, and see it tomorrow on Grants Pass and Josephine County's chambers YouTube and Facebook channels. Thank you for those who are watching at home. The rules are very straightforward. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction, 90 seconds to answer questions, and two minutes for closing comments. Julie Hall of the City of Grants Pass will be our timer. The yellow light signifies 30 seconds remaining in your conversation. The two lights are here on the podium, on both podiums. When the red light shows up, time's up. Zip it, as they say. We will take questions from citizens in the audience, time permitting. I want to thank the chamber ambassadors and Brittany Biller for assisting us in collecting these questions. And again, thank you for not having your phones on, I appreciate that.
So we are joined by the following candidates for county commissioner, this is for position three, left to right, and in alphabetical order, we have Pat Fahy, retired businessman of Southern Oregon Sanitation, Nathan Gonzalez, managing partner of Ground Guys, Russell McAlmond, founder of the Center for Human Equality, and Ron Smith, former business owner with Electrical Science. So we'll begin with your introductory statements of two minutes each, starting alphabetically with Mr. Fahy.
I'd like to be in by thanking the Chamber and the Courier for hosting us, and for everybody for being here. I see a lot of my friends in the audience, but for those who don't know me, my name is Pat Fahy, I'm running for county commissioner, position three. If I've known for anything in Josephine County, it's probably by being your local garbage man. I grew up in this business, my dad started in 1948. I like to start off by saying it's not as glamorous as it first appears, but my dad said one of the best things about it is that there's very little image, there's very little image to maintain, and I've worked at that pretty hard. So with that being my primary business application, I should tell you a little bit about it. Currently, there's about 80 employees, we service about 30,000 customers, and I like to say that if you have 30,000 customers, and you pick it up, pick up customers once each week with a garbage recycling can, you have 60,000 opportunities to make a mistake every week, we do a pretty good job. And I mention it because I like to talk about people working. One of the biggest values that you learn early on is that you're only as good as your word. If you say you're going to be there one day, you better be there. If you missed one, you better go back. And the other part I learned that it really didn't matter what position you had in our firm, you had value. It didn't matter if you're a cart washer or a truck driver. We all had a job to do and it didn't get done, and it's really similar to the county, we all have a role to play here. I'm partisans for the position of county commissioner, you get to decide whether I'm worthy or not. And I hope you'll agree with me that I can do the job. I've had a lot of experience in the county doing business and other things, and to be honest, I think I've done a fairly good job and have a track record of success. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Nathan Gonzalez, I'm born and raised in Grants Pass, except for about a six-year stint that I did up in Portland, which is where I met my wife and brought her back. I've been involved in some sort of business for about 25 years, this is the third time this has come up as far as commissioners go. One of the things that I actually don't have a whole lot of is the time at a lot of the city council meetings, so this journey that I've been on to understand how it works has been really quite an experience. One thing I would recommend to everybody here is if you haven't taken the time, go down to the county commissioner meetings and listen to what they're talking about. See what they're saying, see what they're doing, okay? It's really something else, because you start to understand that if all we're doing is taking in, you know, this newspaper or that newspaper, you know, unless you're there yourself to see it, it actually really does make a big difference. So I'm a husband, father, we have six kids, my wife and I have been married for about 26 years. We, in a lot of ways, have traveled a hard path. We started off young, and we're still going. So if there's a whole lot to know about me, I would say there's, it's, I need more than two minutes. So what I would like to do is invite all you guys to come introduce yourselves to me and talk to me after this is done.
All right, Mr. McAlmond.
Thank you for being here. My name is Russell McAlmond. I'm not going to ask for your vote tonight, but instead, I ask you to review the professional qualifications of all four of us who are running for position number three. Please vote for the one you feel is the most qualified to be your next county commissioner. 55% of Josephine County voters want to change in direction. This requires that they change how they select county commissioners. There have been a couple of endorsements already for position number three from two local organizations. One is a small bi-monthly paper in the county, and the other is a partisan political party here in town. With both endorsements, there is only one criterion or one qualification you needed as a candidate. For the paper, it was given if you were opposed to the new charter, that's it, that's all they needed to know about you. For the partisan party, you only had to be a member of their party, that's it, that's all they needed to know about you as a candidate. For both of these public endorsements, no education was required, no experience was required, no ethics was required, nothing else was required to qualify you as their endorsement for county commissioner. This is what is wrong with our county commissioner elections. The people trying to control the outcome are extreme partisans who only require their endorses to be fellow partisans. This is a clear violation of the charter, which requires a nonpartisan race. I hope voters will respect this partisan and extreme approach for who to vote for. If you truly want change, only vote for a qualified county commissioner candidate, not a partisan. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith.
Well, I want to thank the Chamber and the Courier for holding this forum, I think it's a wonderful time to get to know the candidates. I'm Ron Smith, I was born here, my family set it here over 125 years ago, I know Josephine County, I know our issues, I understand them, I have solutions to solve some of them. My wife is here tonight, we've been together 21 years, and we have, most of our grandchildren are children here in the county, that's my incentive, that's my incentive to see things get better here. When I grew up around here, it was a very wonderful place to be a child. Today, I know it's not so much. My background is business management, a former business owner, I've been in business management probably about 25 years plus. I've worked in the county over the years defending our property rights or liberties and freedom. I've held dozens and dozens of meetings through the years to educate the public on policies and issues that were dreadful to their civil rights, to their property rights, and to the Bill of Rights. If you want to know about me, just read the Bill of Rights, that's what I stand for, I stand for the Constitution, that which made America great. So if you're looking to know more about me, you can visit my website, ronsmith.votron smith.com. I've been involved in this time, I know, I've been involved in a lot of issues here, was part of the Lions Club, served the Granges for about eight, nine years, and I was part of the Quanis Club for a while now, I'm a current member of the Josephine County Farm Bureau. And I'll tell you what, we have a county that's absolutely wonderful. The people here are just the greatest people. We have some challenges, but they can be met with a positive attitude and understanding of the issues, which I have. I've studied them, I was friends with the longest-serving county commissioner in the history of Josephine County, 22 years. I picked his brain, I know what a county commissioner does. I wasn't visiting these county commissioner meetings 25 years ago.
Okay, we'll begin with our questions. So the question for all of you, as a member of the Josephine County Commission, what would be your three highest priorities? We'll begin with Mr. Gonzalez and go through.
So my three highest priorities here in Josephine County, the big one would be the budget, understanding we've got some shortfalls that are coming, it's really important that we take the time to look and understand what we're coming up against here. Also, too, one of the things I would like to do with that is to make sure the public understands why the commissioners are making the decisions that they're making. So that's really big. The homeless issue, that almost, at this point, we've done this so many times, it almost feels like a free pass because everybody understands that the homeless is an issue. It would be housing, how we're going to do that, how we're going to put things together, and how we're going to bring people together to do that. And the third thing would be making sure that our law enforcement is supported, like those guys have a job to do. One of the things that was said, and it wasn't by me, was that if we don't have good law enforcement here in Josephine County, that's going to affect tourism, it's going to affect businesses, it's going to affect people wanting to move here, you name it. So anyway, yep. I don't need the whole 90 seconds, do I?
Okay, Mr. McAlmond.
Do I have to press this button? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. I think the three most important things that we need to think about in Josephine County is human relations, human relations, and human relations. I think, I think this is a wonderful county, I think it has talented and intelligent people, but one of the problems that we have in this county that affects all three of those issues is the fact that we don't work together. We are being polarized, we are being pulled apart, we are being demonized, we are being called names, and we are being put into two different camps, or three or four maybe different camps, and we're not coming together for solutions for the problems that we have in Josephine County. We have about 88,000 people here in the county. With all that mental talent of 88,000 people, we will come up with good solutions for the county, but we have to come to those solutions together. So that's why I say that the human relational problem is the biggest problem we have in Josephine County. It's not the homeless, it's not public safety, it is coming together as a community, working together to find good, positive solutions. Thank you.
And Mr. Smith.
My three areas of focus will be law enforcement, housing, and the economy. And the reason I put them in that order is because the reason we even established governments in the first place is for public safety. If a government can't have public safety and make the public feel safe, I believe they're a failing government. So my main priority would be fund the sheriff. Now, I was talking to the sheriff the other day, and he said, this economy is killing him. His fuel bill alone for patrol has increased by $50,000. $50,000, now that inflation's going to hammer the city budget and the county budget, it's going to hammer the whole country. So I think public safety is the number one priority. Housing is created because of the, we in Oregon have a unique situation. We have Senate Bill 100, which is called statewide planning, that forces the counties to adopt 18 statewide goals, whether they like it or not. So, and then I think jobs, the economy is a very important issue, jobs will help pull us out of the poverty. If you look at the history of places that lots of their natural resources, like Josephine County, poverty followed them. So we have to figure out what's going to replace timber. What is it going to replace timber? So anyway, those are my three priorities, law enforcement, housing, and economy. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Fahy.
Well, I agree with Ron, I think that if I was to prioritize it, I would say that law enforcement, first and foremost, then comes the economy, and then housing. And I think that some of the solutions cascade in others. If we're successful in addressing our housing inventory shortage, it'll actually help the tax base for the county, it'll drive, actually, right now, housing is probably our biggest timing factor to the economy. We can't recruit people, we can't get job force, workforce housing, places like Kirby, Rogue Truck Bodies needs people, it's hard to get housing for them. We've had some success with the loosening of some of the state planning issues from the legislature. We have an opportunity to take advantage of those. We have an opportunity to take advantage of those right now. We have some things we have to address. There's some opportunities that we could probably address dealing with, with our state legislators, like ADUs. You know, put an ADU on a location, but it has to be, the way it's written up now, it has to be for a family member. Can we change that so they can rent it out? So that somebody could put an ADU on their property, rent it to somebody, provide some low-income housing, or some housing for some workforce. There's opportunities there, but we have to be willing to communicate and talk to our cities, our counties, our state legislators, and we have to have state legislators that are actually willing to do something, actually willing to vote for something. So the, the solutions are out there, but sometimes it'll require us to actually communicate with other folks.
Our next question goes first to Mr. McAlmond. There's a county charter initiative on the ballot, 17-116. Do you favor or oppose this ballot measure, and why?
I've never heard of it. No, just kidding. Well, if you haven't been around for a while, or if you've been in a cave somewhere, you probably have heard some discussions about the, the new charter. It's been going on since last, last year, I think, and I have seen multiple, multiple, multiple social media posts about this charter. My position on the new charter is neutral. And the reason why my position on the new charter is neutral is because there's kind of an ethical dilemma that's created by the new charter for county commissioner candidates. One is the fact that we would get a lot more compensation as county commissioners under the old charter than the new charter. So if I tell you to vote against the old charter, guess what? I'm going to make a lot more money. So I came out of an industry that said, "If you have a conflict of interest between making more money when you recommend something to somebody and not, then you need to back away from that kind of decision and let the client decide." So in this case, I'm letting the people of Josephine County, I trust your judgment, and I trust all the information that's been out there. The wonderful part about this whole process has been people have actually been interested in a charter, of all things. But I, I will leave it up to the people to decide. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
That's hard, though. I'm against it. I don't think we can need it. I don't think we can afford it. I believe it will create more division. The county was divided up into districts before. They had three districts. It was a miserable failure, and they abandoned it after one term. And the reason it was a failure is the commissioners that were in the district only cared about their district. They didn't care about the other people. They didn't care about the other district. They weren't watching out for the whole county. That's one of the things. I think the biggest thing in both our current charter and the charter that's trying to be adopted is that the agency of the state is the first issue, okay, in, in the preamble. And, and what that does is gives, it takes away a lot of the power of the body politic, the commissioners and the people in the county. So Monal, Monal County has it different. They have the body politic first, and then agent of the state second. I think that's what mainly needed to be changed. I don't see how we can afford this. That county manager's department will end up being the largest department the county has. Where are you going to find office space? All that staff's going to be on the public retirement. I don't think we can afford it. I don't think it's going to do anything positive for the county. I think it will create more division. And so I, I'm opposed to it, and, and so I, I don't know what to say. People, do your research. Is it necessary? Who's, who's pushing this? Who's behind it? What's the agenda? Because there's an agenda behind it to change our charter. If you don't think there's an agenda, you haven't looked, read between the lines. This thing will drastically fundamentally change Josephine County, and I believe it will change it for the worse, not the better.
Mr. Fahy.
Well, I like to tell people, I'm 66 years old, lived my whole life here in Josephine County, and I've seen a parade of county commissioners come through. Some of them good, some were acceptable, and some were flat awful. We've recalled several. We've had commissioners make decisions that have horrible ramifications financially in the county, some which took us years to pay off. I'm in favor of the charter because I think a trained manager will alleviate some of the worst mistakes we make, the commissioners have made. To be honest, this charter amendment today is not that, with the exception of the five commissioners, it's not that dissimilar to the last charter. It was based on the last charter. I've heard a lot of false information broadcast about it, and I understand that's what you do in politics. The truth is usually the first victim of politics. I think that this charter is strictly a referendum on our current commissioners, and that's too bad. The current commissioners should be based on their own action, the charter should be based on its, it's what it's going to do. I want better government for Josephine County, and I think the charter will do it. Right now, they talk about representation. All three commissioners live within about five mile radius of each other. People in Applegate, Wolf Creek, and Cave Junction, they hardly ever see a commissioner. I can see their want for representation.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I, I too am a no on the new charter, and I went through a, a process with that because like I had said before, if we take all our information from other people's sources and you don't actually look it up yourself, sometimes that's what you need to do. So I actually went through, and I did read both of them, and you have to understand that, that the old, the new charter does preempt the old charter in a lot of ways. I understand that. But when you go through the old charter, it reads like the America that I grew up in. It, it protects your, your, you know, your, your free speech, your freedom of religion, your Second Amendment rights. And if only for the fact that it actually states them and acknowledges them. I liked the old charter. As far as the five commissioner things goes, then, you know, we can talk about that. Let's look at maybe doing an amendment at some point. But, but for that sole purpose being the number one thing that everybody is saying that we need the new charter for, I don't, I just don't agree with that. I think it's too much. It's throwing the baby out with the bathwater rather than taking time to actually understand what it is you're making a decision about.
All right, so we're on to the second question. So the question for all of you is, Josephine County includes some of the poorest zip codes in Oregon. What can you do to address poverty and homelessness in Josephine County? We begin with Mr. Smith.
I think you've got to ask yourself the question, "Why?" When you look at the problem, are you looking at a symptom or are you looking at the cause? What's the cause behind the poverty in Josephine County? Josephine County is one of the richest mineralized counties in the western United States. Why are we poor? We have great timber resources. Why are we poor? We have wonderful people. We have some strong businesses here. Why are we poor? We are poor because we're over-regulated, overtaxed, tied down, throttled down by state government and the federal government that doesn't give us any autonomy. If Josephine County had some autonomy and could make some choices, we, we would be a wealthy county. So what can we do to address it? Bring back resources. Our resources are there, and they're going to waste. It's like if you were a, a New England fishing village and you lost your right to fish, what would happen to your community? If you were an Iowa farm town and you couldn't farm anymore, what would happen to your community? Nevada mining camp, you lost the mining ability, what would happen to your community? That's what's happened to Josephine County. We lost that which made us, built us, and helped us. So are we willing to take a fight to that? Are we willing to stand up? I, I think maybe we need more, more courage, more fortitude, more willingness. Are you ready to stand with me?
Mr. Fahy.
So when you look at employment, manufacturing, business, one of the things that's required is trained people. I have a whole fleet of trucks out there. They all require a driver with CDL. I serve on the board of RCC, so I'm, I believe in the mission of educating people. I think education is a big factor. I go out to a manufacturing plant, and one of the first things I ask is, "How many of your welders came from Rogue Community College?" And surprisingly, there's quite a few. I go to my doctor's office, I talk to one of their, their staff person, "Where'd you get your education, RCC?" There's a huge need for trained people in this county, and I think that education is a huge help. That's not the only answer, by, by any means. We need to look at our regulations, we look at those, look at those impediments that keep businesses from thriving. The economy of Grants Pass and Josephine County, I'm agreeing with Ron, we have a lot of potential, but we need to do some work, and we need to be honest about where we are. There's mining out there. I watched where AMR Mining, the county canceled their, their lease. Read yourself, we should be promoting that. I don't know if we are. I served on the SOREDDI Board, Southern Oregon Economic Development. We dropped out of that, and one of the things that you have to remember is that about 6,000 people that live in Josephine County, work in Jackson County, were more than just Grants Pass. You can finish that. Well, as you can say, that we're, we're all part of the Southern Oregon system, and we have to acknowledge that.
Mr. Gonzalez.
So how to deal with the, the poverty and the homelessness? So I guess the, the process that I would go through if I was the county commissioner is understanding what resources we already have, what we have in place, and how to put those things in order. I know that the Supreme Court rulings are going to be a big deal on how we're going to be able to handle some of that stuff. So as far as training goes, like what Pat said, that's not a joke. When you've got a bunch of employees coming through, just getting people trained up and ready to go is one of the hardest things you'll ever do. I'm looking at some people in the, in the crowd here that, that agree. So we need to offer something for them rather than just a bus ticket out of town. You know, we need to do something, we need to come together. It, it's definitely a community thing. I know that the Gospel Rescue Mission here, love them or hate them, I tend to be a huge fan, look at how successful they are. And if somebody is having success in something, have the humility to go ask them, "What are you doing? Why is this working so well?" Stop being an ego thing. So it would be understanding that, what we have available, and then how do we help to lift these people up? How do we help to give them a hand up? What are the opportunities they're going to have in place? And then understanding budgeting and finances from the state, I can give you all those answers as well, but that's really what's from the heart.
Mr. McAlmond.
Well, poverty and homelessness are two very different issues. Poverty is an economic issue, and I disagree that it's going, we're going to get out of it by mining. I think we're going to get out of it by actually treating the assets that we have here. We're in a service industry in this country, and we have tourism, we have all kinds of different economic opportunities here in Josephine County, and they're not being exploited for a couple of different reasons. They're not being exploited because we're not taking advantage of some of those economic opportunities, but the other reason is because we've created this aura around Josephine County that we're not a very welcoming county. We need to be a lot more friendly and welcoming, I think, for tourism and other kinds of activities. As far as homeless is concerned, I think that there's, we have to approach this issue from a compassionate issue. We have to understand that these are human beings that deserve our compassion, they deserve our respect. I have seen some people, I've seen some of the homeless attacked here in the county. That is, that is unacceptable behavior. We need to understand these are human beings too, and we should, with our social safety net, we should do whatever we can to try to provide some sort of shelter for other human beings who are living in our county and work with the city and work with the state and work with the federal government on this issue. Thank you.
Next question. How do you plan on helping keep businesses thriving while we continue to deal with challenges such as increased costs and increased taxes? Mr. Fahy.
First thing is, you want to know what they need. Any business is going to come in town and invest in infrastructure, they need to work with the planning and building department, and sometimes that's not easy. We talked to, Colleen and I went out and visited Rogue Truck Bodies. They were ready to open up a new line of business at about 30 employees. They were being stymied. Well, I don't, I shouldn't say they're being stymied, but they're, they're having a very difficult problem just getting the basics through the planning department. They're, they're being stymied. We have to look at, those regulations, they just don't make sense anymore. I think if it were me, if I had a major employer like that that was waiting to come into my county, I'd be having somebody in my office every week giving me a report on that. We should acknowledge that, and we shouldn't be afraid to recruit new, new employers. But that requires, we have to have a place for them. I like the idea of the industrial park, I like the idea of having workforce training. Those things are all critical. We have to look at what employers need, and we need to be willing to push back when we get a crazy thing from the state. We have to be willing to form coalitions with other counties, other cities, the legislature to try and go up there and say, "Hey, have you thought about this? At some point in time, I want to tell you about a roof we had to build at SOS." It makes absolutely no sense. Did we have a choice? Well, yes, we could wait 90 days to go through the appeals process, but I don't think the county understands, at least the county planning department, time is money.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, as far as helping small businesses, I guess the, the, one of the big things you would want to do is to streamline the processes, help them, you know, reward them for being in business, don't penalize them. I'll tell you, there's been some interesting things happening in the economy. For those of you here local that have jobs or have your own businesses or you're working on things, like in the contracting world, we've never had to charge more and make less. It's been shocking what the differences are. We had, there's one, I got a phone call this morning from a guy because they had my truck to be worked on, and they said, "Hey, we're actually closing the doors, you need to come get your truck, we can't work on it." And I was blown away by that. I just, I, I don't think I've ever gotten a phone call like that. But for people to understand really where we're at economically, it's, we're in a tough spot, and so whatever we can do to help businesses, to encourage them, I mean, the, the, the obvious one to me is taxes because it's a net expense, and you have to do so much volume to get your net margins, you know? Some help from the county would be good, but when you're in the service industry, you know, the, the service industries never really go away. It doesn't matter really how bad the economy is. If your toilet's blocked up, you need to get your toilet fixed. If your landscaping is out of control, you got to get your landscaping under control. I mean, there's just certain things to us that doesn't affect us, but I do know that over in Medford, I think they laid off 54 plumbers, and that's huge. I mean, that's, that, that feels like 2008, 2009, but that, something definitely needs to be brought up, and the commissioners need to be paying attention to that.
Mr. McAlmond.
Well, I have, I have an MBA and I have my license, Certified Financial Planner, so if there's one thing I understand intimately is the impact of inflation and taxes on personal budgets. And when you have inflation, you not only have inflation and taxes on personal budgets, you also have rising interest rates. All three of those are impacting everybody in this county. Now, inflation is a national problem, it's not, there's not much we can do unless we're Federal Reserve members, so we can't do much about that. Taxation, we can. And so what we can do with taxation as a county commissioner is make sure that we're not going to increase taxes on the people in the county. They can't afford any higher taxes. So what we need to do as responsible members of the county commission is to make sure that we run the county as lean as possible. And if we need, if we're running short of funds or if we have a budget that is not going to make it for next year, then we may have to cut positions in the county and reduce the size of the government in order to do that. I do not want to go to anybody in this county in this economic environment and say, "We need more tax money from you because we're not being, we can't pay our bills." Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
The best thing government can do for businesses, get out of the way. We have too much government. In, in, in Josephine County, primarily Grants Pass, the development and taxation is hindering business. Now, you got to understand jurisdiction. The commissioners have very little to do inside of the city of Grants Pass or the city of Cave Junction. They have their own governments and their own jurisdictions. So what a commissioner can do is through the planning department and taxing. I think we need to cut regulations wherever we can. Problem is, we have that little bugger called statewide planning that kind of hamstrings the county's ability. But what Mr. Trump did to spur the economy and gave us energy independence, which we no longer have, which gave us gas prices of about a buck and a half a gallon, what he did is he cut government regulations across the board. So the best thing I could do as a commissioner is work with the other commissioners to see where we could cut regulations, keep the taxes low, and roll out the red carpet for, in planning department, and say, "By golly, Josephine County's a wonderful place to do business. Bring, bring your business here. We're going to give you some tax breaks, we're going to make it some incentives for you, we'll help you set up an industrial park." But basically, what government really needs to do is get out of the way and let free enterprise flourish. America was the greatest powerhouse economy in the world when government didn't overregulate them.
Okay, question five. What is your assessment of the level of Okay, question five. What is your assessment of the level of trust citizens have with county government now? What would you want to do to either maintain or to improve that level of trust, beginning with Mr. Gonzalez?
So, what is our assessment of lack of citizens' trust in local county government? Was that the question? Really, the only thing you can do is like you can, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink. You know, you have to make the information available to them. I think a lot of it comes down to understanding what's happening. People need to take the time themselves. There's some personal responsibility there as far as understanding what's happening, taking time, because none of us want to, trust me. At 46 years old, last thing I want to be doing is taking time out of my life. We have four kids at home, but to go down to the county offices and find out what's happening. So, as far as it goes, I would also say it probably depends on who you ask. I've heard the statistic, 55% of the county thinks it's going in the wrong direction. The question would be who was polled, you know? And I think most people, I, I just don't understand. That came from, was it from the courier? I don't, I don't know where that statistic came from. So, yeah, this guy knows, so he'll tell you, I'm sure.
DHM Research.
The what?
DHM Research.
DHM Research. And so, that beeper, most of the time when I hear that, it's time to start talking or shoot, so, yeah. So, far as everything else, yeah, I think that that's about it. Thank you.
Mr. McCollman.
I think the level of trust in county government in Josephine County is very low, and I think there's some reasons for that. One of them is the lack of transparency by the current county commissioners. I think, when you talk about trust, one of the things you want to talk about is, why would somebody trust you? What is the basis of trust? And so, trust is really, is going to come from people who have a couple of very, very good qualities. One is competency. You want to make sure that the person who's running the government for you and making the decision for you is competent. That's critical. Another is ethics. You want to make sure that that person has good ethics. You want to make sure that person is going to do what's best for the county and not what's best for themselves. You want to have, you want to be able to understand that that person has some compassion for other people. And you also want to make sure that that person is going to represent everybody in the county. If that person is a partisan, that person is loyal to their political party, they are not loyal to everybody in the county. And so, in order to establish trust, you must have a county commissioner who's going to be willing to represent everybody in the county. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
I think you're going to see that trust in government is a nationwide problem right now. I think we all got a little upset when we had the COVID lockdowns. Put a lot of people out of business, hurt a lot of people. Trust is something that you earn. It's not something that's given to you. So, it's going to take the county government to be out there earning the people's trust. Be transparent. Go out in the public. Hold more public town halls. Get to know the people. Talk to them in person. Open the doors to them. Have a county day in the county building and take people around on tours into the different departments. Let people know what the county government is and what it does. Trust is something you have to earn. It's not going to be given to you. So, it's up to the commissioners, and it's up to the government, not only at the local level, but the state and the federal level. I think you're going to see trust in government nationwide, statewide, is at a lower level than it's been in many years. So, it's something that we need to work on. But trustworthiness, you don't trust somebody overnight. You have to get to know them. You have to get to believe in them. And so, this is going to take a little effort on the county to go out and earn that trust again. Go out there in the public. Talk to people. Be out there. Be accessible. Answer the phone. When somebody calls you, go talk to them. Get out there. Talk to the people. I want to represent the people. I want to be out there in the public. I'm out there in the public all the time, talking to people so I can get my heartbeat to this county.
Mr. Fahy.
I just hearted back those tin words that everybody hates to hear. I'm here from the government. I'm here to help you. So, Ron's absolutely right. Trust isn't given. It's earned, and you earn it through a lifetime of being honest and trustworthy. It doesn't help when you have talk radio second guessing every decision every public employee makes. I would like to tell you that two or three years with different commissioners, it'll be different. I don't think it will be. I think that this is a phenomenon that's not limited to Josephine County. It's nationwide, and we have to kind of listen, not, what did Lincoln say? He said, "We need to listen to our better angels." We have to say, when we hear something on, I don't care what radio station you listen to, that doesn't make sense, and you know the person involved, that's why it's inherent on all of us who serve, to be out there, to say, "That doesn't sound like Ron," or "That doesn't sound like Nathan," or "That doesn't sound like Chris." That's not them. And if you have a question with somebody, or you have a legitimate question, just go ask them. Every bit of information I have out there has my cell phone on it. Now, don't all call at once, please, and don't call after 9:00 PM because my wife will, I'll hear about it. But I'm not afraid to answer questions. If there's a, there's a political question, ask me. I will tell you how I feel about it. It may not be correct, but I'll tell you.
Next question. Where do you see the county in five years? What would be the biggest improvement you think could happen in five years? Mr. McCollman.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to disagree with my friend Pat Fahy here and say, "I think actually in five years, I think trust in government is going to be a lot better." And the reason why it's going to be a lot better is because you're going to select a county commissioner who has good ethics, good communication skills, and is competent, and will do what's right for everybody in the county. That's why things are going to be better five years from now. But I also think, in five years from now, some of the problems that we currently have, like the homeless issue and some of those things, some of those things will go away, will have other problems, but I think we're going to have the ability to competently handle those other problems in the future. I think we're, I think the business environment's going to get better. I think the economy is going to get better, and I think really that we have a rosy future to look toward in the next five years. And I'm looking forward to being in a position where I can help the county to become more prosperous and more welcoming. And I do agree that this is, I do think that this is a human relational issue too. I'd like to see the dynamics of human relations in the county become a lot more positive, a lot more fair, a lot more equitable to everybody in the county, and that will create a very, very positive future for Josephine County five years from now.
Mr. Smith.
Well, one thing I'd like to see happen within the next five years is have the Merlin Industrial Park fully, fully full of businesses. It's got a lot of space over there. That's a main hub. That was set up with an idea of helping create a lot of jobs in our county, and it still can, but it's only about half full. And I'd like to see some more development out in the Illinois Valley. Maybe, maybe an industrial park out there. They have plenty of land out there. What we have to do is create the jobs. If we'll let government get out of the way, cut the regulations, cut the development fees, roll out the red carpet, give some incentives for business to come here, we can be a very prosperous county five years from now. But it's going to take work. It's going to take people coming together. Do you think hiring, or hiring a commissioner is going to change things? It's your guys. You have to do it. You have to get involved. The people have to do these things. You're not going to solve homelessness when you sit down and watch TV. Get out there. Get involved. Come up and support your government. I've held meetings all over this county to educate people, and that's what I would continue to do as a commissioner. I would be out there having town halls. I'd be out there and making phone calls, inviting businesses here. That industrial park is a big asset, but not one that's only half full. The Illinois Valley needs that kind of, same kind of industrial park, and I'm all for that. I'd just love to see that five years from now. Thank you.
Mr. Fahy.
So, repeat the question.
Question is, where do you see the county in five years? What would be the biggest improvement you think will happen in five years?
Well, if it's where do we want to see the county in five years, I definitely don't want to see in Idaho. So, I think the county has a ton of potential. And if we work together, and that means that we have to talk about devicefulness, that's been expressed here a lot. I am like Ron. I'm a pretty optimistic kind of guy, but I understand optimism only takes you so far. The other part of that equation, a lot of hard work. Now, whoever you get for county commissioners, if they want to make a big impact, it's not hanging around the courthouse. It's going out and meeting not just their fellow citizens, but also their fellow governments. We've had three or four years where the county wouldn't hardly talk to the city. That's got to stop. We need to have a good representation with the city of Cave Junction. After our, after all, they are Josephine County residents. We have to talk to school districts. How can we help their mission and maybe their mission help us? You have to, I forgot how many districts there are in Josephine County, like 19 or 20. We have to be able to talk to all of them. I'm an optimist. I think it's going to work, but it'll only work if we work together, work with our fellow governments in the county, in the state, and to be quite honest, we have to work harder than what we're working now. So, I'm an optimist. I think it's going to be better.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, I definitely would like to see clean parks. I can say that for a fact. Where I'd like to see is, is clean parks bolstered police force, thriving businesses. I mean, as far as looking at everything, you know, not looking through rose colored glasses, but really understanding that we can do that. We can do that. And it comes from, we've got to be, we've got to be communicating. For our city parks, the county can help with that in whatever way they can. They need to come together and talk. As far as the stuff that they're doing out in Cave Junction, the Mancuso that was here earlier, listening to what they're going through, it's really something. I mean, the statistic that comes to mind that I think about a lot is that most of the homeless people, we don't even see. And that was the part that blew me away. I had never even considered that because we're so, you know, quite frankly, we're kind of appalled, like, "Look at our parks. Look what's happening. Look at all the syringes," but we can't even imagine the solid waste and the things that are happening out in, out in Cave Junction. So, five years, I'd like to have a clean parks, a closer community, good, strong churches that are working together. I mean, businesses that are thriving, families that are doing well. All those things matter.
So, now we are coming to the closing comments. You get two minutes each. We'll begin with you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you all for coming. Thank the chamber, thank the courier for holding this meeting. I'm running as the people's commissioner. And why do I say the people's commissioner? I want to give you five good reasons. One, I've worked on the people's side of government for over 25 years, defending our property rights, our liberties and freedoms. And I'll do the same as your commissioner. I will defend your rights. Number two, because when you elect me, you get a man of integrity, somebody who will honestly listen to your questions. Somebody will hear your questions and get back to you about your questions. Three, I was born in Josephine County. You'll get, I'm a team player on the people's team. I'm not a politician. I'm just like you, wanting honest government, transparency in government, and lower taxes. Four, I have no hidden agenda. I will openly work to see the people's will expressed through county government. I want to be your eyes, your ears, and your voice inside a county government. And five, as a conservative, I'm done letting politicians waste our taxes on nonsense while we're robbed by drifters, choked by smoke, and suffer these outrageous housing costs. I want to go to work for you and serve you as your commissioner. I'll be out there in the county talking to you all the time, because I believe I'm the people's commissioner, and in order to be that, I have to listen to the people and represent the people. So, if you'd like to talk to me afterwards, I love talking to people. I love Josephine County. My family's been here a long time. I want this to be a great place for our children to grow up again. I remember roaming the hills, carefree as a kid, swimming in the rivers, and now I wonder if the kids feel safe doing that. I really wonder about that kind of stuff. But I'd like to see Josephine County be that wonderful place to raise your kids. Someplace you can say, "I live in Josephine County. I'm proud of being here. It's a great county. We have wonderful people here. We have thriving businesses here. We have a government that pays attentions to its people."
Mr. Fahy.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. You can't, we've had several forums where it's been sparsely attended. I'll just put it that way. I want to thank especially the people in the audience that send me text messages, except for that person that sent me a text message of a bulldog. I'm not that kind of guy. I'm like Ron. I grew up here, the Josephine County I grew up in the 60s and 70s, we will probably never get back to. But my goal is to make sure my grandchildren have the best Josephine County we can have. People talk about campaigning, and unless you've done it, you really don't understand. There's a lot of, it's hard. You have to do things you probably wouldn't do, but the best part is getting out and meeting people, going door to door. And yes, I have started my door to door knocking and hanging stuff. Meeting people you don't know otherwise. Some of the best gifts I've gotten were from family, friends, that we haven't seen in 30 years, that call you, wish you good luck, have a question for you. Even some of the odd things, like my dad's very first employee just passed away. A gentleman by the name of Ben Watts out in the Applegate. Going to his funeral was, aside from the campaign part, was just a gift. You know, we all do things like post on Facebook. That seems like what you do. I do a lot of ones that are called, "When politics really isn't politics, it's when you do your normal life and you realize how good your normal life is." Saturday, I was, I was refereeing at a track meet. That's a gift. We don't realize quite often how much a gift it is. I had one of my old Boy Scouts come back and talk to me. That's a gift. You guys are a gift. I really appreciate you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
So, the gentleman named Simon Sinek wrote a book called Start With The Why. You don't really have to read the book if you understand the title, Start With The Why. But for me, it came down to, why am I doing this? So, you guys would know if you were to vote for me, why am I voting for that guy? A lot of people in my generation, as Generation Xers, we're not, they're not really that involved in, in anything that doesn't involve coaching or work. And so, getting involved in the county was a really personal thing to me because I was born and raised here. I remember what it was like to leave your back door unlocked when you were going on vacation, just in case your neighbors needed something. That was the Grants Pass that I grew up in. Starting with the why, when we talk to our kids and your kids ask you, "Why are you doing this?" Dad, why are you doing this? Why are you gone again? This is like the third or fourth night this week. You know, "Let's play marbles. Let's do something." Well, I hope that my kids are, that my actions will make my children proud, that something came up, the call was made, so to speak, and I decided to go ahead and move forward, knowing that this whole process wasn't going to be fun. I mean, sitting up in front of everybody and trying to convince you why you're better than the person sitting next to you doesn't really set well in a lot of times, especially if you were raised to be humble, to work hard, to do these things. So, the why would be that I want to serve my community, and I am a Republican, but it's very, very important that we listen to everybody. Just come to one of our family gatherings, you know, my family's all up in Portland, and there was a time that we weren't talking at all, and I didn't want to have that happen again. We need to come to the table. We need to talk like grownups. I'm pretty sure if our kids were acting the way that we are acting sometimes when it comes to people that differ in political opinions, we'd probably tell them to stop it. They'd get grounded or maybe even a SWAT. So, we need to come together and talk.
Mr. McCollman.
Last, but hopefully not least, thank you for your patience. Thank you for coming tonight. It is wonderful to see, as Pat was mentioning, it is wonderful to see a crowd of people that are very interested in finding out more about us as county candidates. Again, thank you very, very much for being here and putting up with, putting up with us trying to answer all of your questions. I really want to thank you for myself, for putting up with my feeble attempts to answer your questions. I don't have all the answers to all the issues, but I do promise to work hard to research and apply my training for the best solutions. So, how am I different as a candidate than everybody else up here? I think one of the things that's kind of surprising about the difference that I have with some other people up here, I wasn't born here. So, it seems like everybody is born here, but I wasn't born here. That can be good, that can be bad, I guess, but I think there's some advantages. There's probably some disadvantages. The other thing, I'm a US Marine veteran with a, three years of active duty and honorable discharge. I'm the only veteran running in position number three. I have a MBA and a Masters of Science. running in position number three. I have a MBA and a Master's of Science in Financial Services. Out of all eight candidates, I am the only one that has a graduate level of education, so that makes me different. And if you might look at the top of my head, you might realize there's something else different about me. So, what is up here, of course, is called a kippah, a kippah in Hebrew, or yarmulkeh in Yiddish, and that makes me Jewish. And I think maybe I'm the first Jewish person who's ever ran for county commissioner in Josephine County. So, I haven't checked the historical records for that, but, but I think that's true. And of course, if you elect me, I would be the very first Jewish county commissioner ever in the history of Josephine County. So that's, that's a good reason. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give an applause to these candidates.